Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two Board of Selectmen meeting, which is totally virtual right now, probably for the rest of this month and into February. But there's some good news on the way, which I'll hit to in my my update. So this won't be lasting that much longer, but certainly having this option is great. So as usual, let's start the meeting off with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Stands one nation.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen of December twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there another motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen for December twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Don't have a big agenda today, but we do have a special session, so we'll get right started. And I'll start it off with the first selectments updates. We do have, thank you to Dana Ramon Ramain of the Greenwich Hospital for getting over the numbers today for COVID. Currently, right now, we have sixty-two people in Greenwich Hospital, four are on the ICO, two are on ventilators, and system-wide, there are seven hundred and thirty-seven people in the system, in the Yale New Haven system. I mean, that's the bad news. The good news is this seems like it's hitting the peak in a lot of areas. New York City's come out with statements that they think they've hit their peak already. Whether we have or not, or have not, we're probably within the next couple of weeks, I think. We may be there now, but even if we aren't, I would just question people, just be vigilant for the next few weeks, get us through this month into February, but it does look really good going forward. So we're almost there. And, you know, the good thing, good news, other good news is this, as we've seen, the virus is weakening, and if people are vaccinated and boosted, you know, they're usually not going to the hospital. Most of the people in the hospital still are unvaccinated, so just keep your guard up. You know, I'll continue to wear my gator in the gym for a few more weeks until we get past this this period. But daylight's, you know, right around the corner, so that is good news. Couple of notes here, I'm putting together a pedestrian safety committee with representatives from the eastern and western parts of town, as well as central Greenwich, which includes COSCO, which is the actual geographic center of the town. Met with a few people yesterday. We have some representatives there, they're gonna meet for a couple of times just to do some organizing, and then they will start posting their meetings and noticing it in the minutes. But basically, this is to keep up. Sorry about the dogs. Sorry. The, this is, the campaign promise, we made a pledge back in twenty-nineteen, and we started it in our first term with bumpouts of intersections, with new sidewalks being painted, being put in, and crosswalks being put in, and some being repainted, as well as bike issues, you know, with the task force, which I'll get to in a second. It all comes together, especially now with people, the new norm of people, you know, working from home. Some of that, even as the numbers got really good, some people decided they could work from home, and their employers said employers said they could do that. We think that's probably not going to change at least a couple of days a week, so people are home. And we are encouraging them to have an active lifestyle and to get out and walk. And to do so, we want them to do it in a safe manner. And that's why this pedestrian-friendly focus is, you know, which is, we started before the pandemic, and it's really come into play now. So I have put money in the budget for a lot, all different parts of town and DPW section of the budget to do these sidewalks and crosswalks, so, and bumpouts. So stay tuned, and, you know, that's all to the good, and we certainly would like your input. And these meetings will be publicly noticed, as I said, probably starting, I guess, around late, later February or into March. The bike task force, I reached out to Mayor Simmons, spoke with a man named Jerry Silver, who is the, runs their task force, and we, they've, I put him in contact with our task force, and they're talking, so we're trying to look for some things that we can do that are possible and working, you know, collaborating with Stanford. We know that our roads are not big enough. I don't think a hundred thousand dollars, I think is a big waste of money, because we know what that study's gonna tell us. So we're working on what we can do, and we have lots of good ideas. TPW will be working on, I guess, getting those, I hope I'm saying right, those sharrows on the road that will tell people they're sharing the roads with bicyclists. I put out an RFP for a bike-sharing program, which is exciting. Also, the, yeah, Pedal Greenwich will also be doing a statement on that. Anthony had reached out, Anthony of Pedal Greenwich reached out to me, so he's aware of all this, he's very excited. Also, the Junior League is working on a program to get kids to and from their workplaces that, you know, so that doesn't make them rely on cars. So it's another, you know, bike station endeavor. And so they are in touch with everybody, including the task force. So there's lots of things going on there, which is good. And we, as I said, we hope to have something when the warmer weather is in place, something that we could show people, some points on the board. I did, I am continuing to work on the capital and the operations parts of the budget with Ben Branyan. Lots of exciting things that it, obviously, we can't say yes to everything, and we want to make sure we keep our mill rate as low as we can. I doubt we can deliver zero percent in the last few years, but we're gonna be, we're gonna be very low. And, but we're also, again, relying on those public-private partnerships to help step up and fill the void where, you know, we may not be able to do all of the projects that we'd like to do. I did have a CCM meeting yesterday and again today, that's why I was a few minutes late here. They are putting in, we talked about and voted on, looking at the idea of putting in two hundred thousand dollars for a study of statewide flooding issues, and they know very well that this is an issue for every single municipality. And our issues may not totally be the same, but we all know that these are not unique to just one or two municipalities, and everybody's having this issue. So in addition to our efforts here to mitigate the flooding damage, being a member of the Board of Directors at CCM is allowing Greenwich to have a voice at the table, and I certainly will, will take that opportunity to do so. I want to thank the Greenwich Police Department for the successful rollout of the test kit distribution a couple of times at Grass Island, it went really smoothly, it was a home run. Thank the Competitive Commission on Aging in the Senior Center for their first day. That was a little harder because of the venue. We thought that by doing it at that location, it would really address that population, which it did, but it really backed up traffic a lot, so in the future, we'll try to avoid that, those large-scale operations there. But Grass Island was a home run, and we have some other backup venues that we look at for anything in the future. But thank you to the Commission on Aging and Senior Center, and of course, Greenwich Police Department. We got lots of great feedback on that, so thank you. I'll have, I met with a business, local business owner on the avenue two days ago. So we're gonna have some exciting news on EV charging stations. This will be the first one, I think, from a private business. I know we've heard a lot of people say, well, when they go to Stanford, they see some of the, a lot of these stations all over the place. Well, we're, we're gonna be doing an announcement with a business that will be totally privately funded, that will allow for, for electric vehicles to be charged in the vicinity of Greenwich Avenue. So that's more good news there. I did, when I took office two years ago, we put together all these committees and task forces, and there were two that I inherited, and one of them, I thought about last year, last term, and see if we could modify the name, and that's the First Selectmen's Committee on Diversity. While we celebrate our diversity every day, in these times where, you know, there's a lot of division in the country, I wanted to bring more of a unifying message, and so I suggested a name change for it. And I met with their, with the committee the other day, and went back and forth, and they came back with something else that I really liked. A member there did, some of the people didn't want to change the name, but I think they understood why I wanted to do that. And certainly, if it has the First Selectmen's name on it, then I think the First Selectmen, whoever he or she is, should have some input on what it's called. So there, keep an eye on that, there'll be a name change coming soon, it's, it's a good one. And I think the person who put it forward kind of built on what I had given them, but it has a message of unity and community in it. So that will be coming forward shortly. We met with Portchester, New York after we had the Byron River Flooding Meeting at Glenville School. We told everybody I would set up a meeting with Portchester, I did. The new mayor was there, the village manager, Stuart Raven, who was very upset that his Greenwich counterpart, named Raven, wasn't there, but I told her she'll be at the next one, she had a conflict. But a really good guy, and a few of the village trustees were there, including Frank Ferrara, another good man. And we're gonna be meeting in the next few weeks there on-site to not only discuss the bridge project for the Byron River, where we're expanding the bridge there and lifting it up, so, and widening it so more water can flow through. But we're also gonna walk over to, to Delavan and Mill, where the Tarry Lodge was, and the big project there, that was very controversial, and, and get, we're gonna start and set up where New York DOT and Connecticut DOT joins us, so we can sync up the lights and make for a better flow of traffic there, because there really is a bottleneck there. And it would, and they heard from us, that, that meeting where I was, again, emphasizing that all of the building right on that border is not going to help either municipality. It's the people there are really hostage to a really bad situation with traffic and congestion now. It's only gonna get worse, and I don't think they disagreed. Certainly zoning, like in Greenwich, they can't control that, it's independent. But they heard us, and I, again, I reiterated my concern about emergency vehicles having to get through on North and Water Street, South Water Street, Mill and Delavan, if traffic is all backed up. And I said, Portchester will have the same issue, and does, with their emergency vehicles. So wherever and whenever we can mitigate these things, we will. But Mayor Marino gave me his word there that he'll, they're gonna meet with us on a monthly basis, like Mayor Flank and I were doing right until the pandemic hit. So that's, so that just, stay tuned to that, and everybody's invited, all of our elected officials are invited there, because we all wanna work in this together. Stanford, Connecticut, same thing. Mayor Simmons and I are old friends and former colleagues in the, in the State House, and we're planning to do, you know, on a fairly regular basis, work together. And this, the bike task force thing will be our first one. Couple fun notes, on the eighteenth, next Tuesday, right before the RTM meeting, Selectwoman Raven and Senator Fazio and I will be doing guest bartending over at Bistro B. Janet, you're next, I'm gonna get you there. We picked three charities to help out, and people can vote on it, so we're excited about that. Lauren will touch on that. And last, I just wanted to wish Marie DeLea a happy one-hundred-first birthday today. She, or it was yesterday, it's been a year since we gathered on her yard out there in Central Greenwich in the height of a pandemic to wish her a happy one-hundredth. And she's in good health, and we wish her many more. So, so Marie, God bless, and have many more, and enjoy your day. And with that, I will turn it over to Lauren. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning, Fred, good morning, Janet, thanks. So just a few updates, piggybacking on your pedestrian safety, just wanted to remind people that we did establish that email address, trafficmatters@grenwichct.org, to report vehicular-type issues that are impacting pedestrian safety. And in our reporting system through the website, that is now a choice to, the civic system, I can't think of the name right now, somebody will remind it to me. Also, wanted to remind folks, we voted on expanding the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee. They're the group of people that source members for the various boards, commissions, and committees. So we expanded it by two, because we do have more boards, commissions, and committees in this term that we're in. So I just want to remind people that we are looking, and if you're interested, you can go to the town's website under snack, and a nomination form is there. So would welcome participation, Civic Plus, thank you, Barbara, is the name of the system. You know, Fred did establish committees, one of them being Reimagine Greenwich. So we're kicking off calendar year twenty-twenty-two, gonna move our meetings, like the majority of the people could meet on Monday, and we're just gonna reestablish, you know, what our mission is, and, you know, what we will, you know, try to accomplish in calendar year twenty-twenty-two. And then, yes, happy birthday to Marie DeLea, and she is as spry as ever. A personal announcement, I became a grandmother last week, and my brother is very, very, what's the word I'm looking for? He's, he's into social media, and Marie DeLea, within minutes, was one of the first people to like it. She was, we all went to Clark House, and she was the guidance secretary, so she knows all of the former O'Connell children. Happy birthday, Marie.
Thank you, Lauren, and again, congratulations to you and David and the kids. With that, we will turn it over to Janet. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning, thank you, Fred. Even as I wish everybody a happy new year, my heart is heavy for the St. Luke and Brunswick school communities, and I just want to say I hope for peace and strength for all who've been touched by this tragedy. My update is brief. On Saturday, I attended an excellent training for newly-elected municipal officials hosted by the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, or CCM. The Zoom was five hours long with only a ten-minute break for lunch, and I loved every minute of it. Specifically, it was a great overview of the different forms of municipal government in Connecticut, best practices for municipal budgeting, and rules and regulations for public meetings. I am such a policy wonk, how fortunate am I to have this job? Looking ahead, Martin Luther King Day is January seventeenth. That Monday, the Bruce Museum is hosting Acts of Community Service Day from ten to four. And at seven o'clock on January twenty-fifth, the YWCA is presenting the Evolution of Gender as its annual MLK conversation on Zoom. You can register on ywca-grenwich.org. And Fred and Lauren, I will happily join you for a mocktail before getting on the RTM meeting on Tuesday. And that's all for me.
Deal, thank you. Five hours and only a ten-minute break, I bet you were a good student. Right? I could tell. Thanks, Janet. Okay, going up, we have one item on old business. It is the Parks and Recreation Department's proposed two thousand twenty-two fees. With that, we have our old friend Blaze Levitong with us. Good morning and happy new year, Blaze.
Hey, good morning, everybody, happy new year. So this is old business, so we're just following up. We presented the fee structure at the, the proposed changes to the Board of Selectmen. Just for background, every year, we, as a department, review the fees. Those fee review guidelines are based on the BET budget guidelines for the year, stated goals from the town administration, and also just some department objectives and market analysis. We kept everything pretty limited, I won't repeat, but we had presented that fee change at the last meeting, had an opportunity for some questions, we really didn't get too much, too much feedback. I think that's because the fees are pretty limited. So if anyone has any questions today, we're here to answer some questions, and also looking for a vote on the fees, as, as we mentioned at the last meeting, it's kind of essential at this point to get those uploaded into the system, so we can open up registration. So you're aware, the good news seems to be that people, combination of just COVID and being locked up inside, and I think also some really good messaging from our department and some reaching out, but there, there's a surge in demand online already. We had, we already have, I want to say, almost five thousand applications for residency, which is huge, and it's only January thirteenth. I mean, we're at like, almost March-April numbers already, so good sign. Lot of work going on in here, but it's definitely important to get the system up and running, because people are, I think, just itching to think about spring and summer right now. So happy to take some questions, and hopefully we can get a vote.
Thank you so much, Blaze. Yeah, you know, I haven't heard anything at all from people, and we, the beauty of sometimes doing a second read is we allow people to weigh in, and I know you posted on the website, and also we put it out there, and I haven't heard anything. I mean, I had a couple of discussions with people, golfers, and they thought it was absolutely fine. So I have not heard anything, I think it's good to go on my end, but certainly I wanna see if my colleagues have any questions or concerns. Lauren, Janet?
Yeah, I think we, I think we, you know, got these fees out there, the second read is a good process to follow. We, we had a chance to meet, you know, and we also, you know, Janet was, when she was, this was kind of her first thing that she kind of got thrown into, so she was great, had to come, had a meeting with us, we were able to explain the whole process. And, and we also haven't really heard any, any feedback or issues. Couple of the same small comments about people supporting some things, so we have some funds at the golf course to make some capital investment. And, you know, we posted it on our website, too, so it's good that we got it out there.
Yeah, no, thank you, you guys did a great job, Blaze, as always, so thank you. All right, is there a motion out there to accept the proposed two thousand twenty-two fee schedule for the Parks and Recreation Department?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you very much, Blaze, thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone, and we'll get that updated and send you the full twenty-two fee schedule, just so you have.
Okay, thank, thank you, appreciate that. Yeah, I'm sure, sure, at some point in the next few months, somebody may not have seen this, will ask some questions, so it'd be good to have that on hand. Okay, next up, we have one item on new business, it's an application for the appointment of the town's Historic District Commission to be the study committee for the designation of Bruce Park as a local historic property. And we have Anne Young and Steve Bishop, the Historic District Commission, on with us. And briefly, just want to let you know how this came about. Last year, when we were, started the process of relocating the Parks and Recreation shed out of Roger Sherman Ball and Park, so we can redo the park, which we're still doing, one of the ideas of several that came up was expanding the, the old mosquito barn over in the back there in Bruce Park. And there was some conflicting information, and so I originally took it as just a small, minor one, but it turned out to be a bigger renovation. So lots of residents and friends over in the Bruce Park area and Meets Point area and the Indian Chase area reached out to me. So we met with them, we met on-site, we walked it, and that barn is great, and I said to them, instead of, you know, I assured them we were not gonna move the, the operations there, but they were concerned about future, you know, moves by people. So I, you know, I told them of the history of how in the past, we had a shed at the bottom, at the end of, what's the little lane over there where the, where the, where the ball field is? I'm, I'm forgetting now. Right, it's right in the middle of Bruce Park, the town took that down in the fifties. Then there was another shed over where the sundial is, and I remember my dad telling me, when he was a teenager, he worked part-time for the Parks Department, and they had showers in there, and, you know, locker rooms, and that came down. So we've really protected that park over the years, and so I suggested to the residents that maybe we ought to move to see if we can get this whole park designated as a historic area. And I pointed out to what we did last year in Binny Park, and, you know, suggested they reach out to the RTM members in District Two, but also District Five and Six, who really spearheaded that last year, and they, I think they have done that, and it seems to be a spirit of cooperation there. I reached out to Steve, Steve came there, he was terrific, he gave us the whole process of how you do this. So we reached out back to the, to the home, the Meets Point Association, and they said, because it's really affecting not just Meets Point, but all of Bruce Park and Indian Chase, you see if everybody can get together and support it, and it looks like they're doing that now. There was a fee involved with it, that they said they would come up and raise some money, so it wouldn't come out of the town's cooperative. So everything is moving along, so that's why Steve and Anne are here right now to, to update us and bring us along in that. So I really want to thank them for the work they put in on this, and I'm really excited about hearing their presentation. So Steve and Anne, floor is yours.
My name is Anne Young, I am the staff person for the Historic District Commission. And unfortunately, Steve Bishop is hard at work, earning a great salary, so he will not be able to join us today. But what I am presenting on the behalf of the Historic District Commission is step one in designating Bruce Park a local historic property. And just some quick background information, the local historic property is a designation that is recognized by the state of Connecticut. And what that does is that truly gives the municipality where the local historic property or local historic district is located, control over changes that may be proposed to the local historic property. And presently, the town of Greenwich has four local historic properties and three local historic districts. The town itself actually does have sites within those, so it's, it's really no stranger, if you will, to the designation. But this would be the first park that would be recognized as such. And what we are asking today is that the Board of Selectmen nominate the Historic District Commission as the study committee for this process. And what the study committee does is it produces a report that discusses exactly what is in the local historic property, its boundaries, some of the architectural history, and of course, some of the historic and social history. And for those of you who have been poring over, you know, newspapers for the past one hundred and eleven years, when the Bruce Park was acquired by the town of Greenwich, you know it has a very, very exciting history. So what would happen going forward is if you decide that the Historic District Commission is worthy of being the creator of the report, that report will get developed and completed. It gets submitted to both the state and the Planning and Zoning Commission for their input. And please do recognize that with each step of the way, there are various opportunities for the public to weigh in. Once it has gone through those hurdles, it comes back to the Historic District Commission. The Historic District Commission has two meetings, if you will, regarding this. One at their regularly-scheduled monthly meeting, and then at another specially-designating meeting simply to discuss that particular issue. So if you don't make one, you still have another opportunity. And then finally, it goes to the RTM for their ratification. So I can go on, but maybe you all might have questions at this point, so I will stop and see if you have anything you'd like me to fill you in on.
Thank you so much, Anne, appreciate it. I, I have no questions, I see Lauren raising her hands. Floor is yours, Lauren.
Is there a cost associated with putting this study together, other than, you know, just manpower?
Well, the cost comes from hiring an appropriate person to produce that report. And usually it is an architectural historian that does that. And the report is very detailed because it goes into exactly what architectural features are important. And then it goes into the, either the naturalistic composition of the site and/or the relative contributing structures to the site. So we have been very fortunate at this point in time to have a group of people who will be underwriting the port. So that report will not come out of any town funds. In terms of manpower, yes, there is some manpower that's involved. Because as I mentioned before, it goes through the various, you know, commissions here within the town. So we are asking them for their attention, but that is part of the process that the state mandates. So does that help you understand the financial aspect of the procedure?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, Lauren, there, we spoke with Steve about that and got the cost. So we went back to the homeowners and they are aware of the number. And that's why they reached out to all the other neighborhoods, see if they could share in that cost or wouldn't cost the town anything. Janet?
Yes. So thank you. I am, I am listening and learning. And as always, I want to start by thanking Anne Young and Steve Bishop for all they do on the Historic District Commission. My, where I'd like to start is what benefit do you envision that this designation would bring? And what, what restrictions do you envision also for the park? Fred just mentioned, for instance, the mosquito barn and its consideration as a potential alternate to the town building in Roger Sherman Baldwin Park. Also, what about, I, I believe that there has been talk in the past about improving the Loop Bridge. And I'm wondering if in this process, if Parks and Rec and the Department of Public Works have been consulted. And then finally, I'm just going to ask process wise, is there going to be a second read on this question or are we voting today?
Okay, I hope I can answer all your questions, but please, you know, do interrupt if I haven't gotten to anything. In terms of the benefit, there are two benefits. One, designating the park a local historic property goes to the Plan of Conservation Development and their encouragement by planning and zoning to identify the various historic aspects of the town of Greenwich and seek appropriate designations, whether it's placement on the National Register of Historic Places, the Connecticut State Register, historic overlay, local historic property. I think you get the idea. The other benefit is, is when a change is proposed to a property that already has local historic property designation, that change must be, must receive a certification of appropriateness. So changes are certainly welcome, but we want to make sure that the design, you know, the materials that go into the design fit within the rest of the scenario. The first instance that comes to mind, and I certainly don't mean to begrudge anyone's hard work on this, was the design that was used by the Eversource Bridge in Bruce Park. No one denies the fact that a bridge was necessary, but some have commented that the design of the particular bridge really wasn't in keeping with what you see are all the other stone bridges. So if Bruce Park receives the designation, Evers, and, you know, the situation were to come up again, Eversource would have to, according to the state statutes, receive a certificate of appropriateness for the next bridge design. So that's, it's in keeping with all the other bridges there in the park. And that's something, you know, I think people really do think of as a benefit, receiving that certificate of appropriateness. Going forward in terms of restrictions, you know, again, it goes back to the certificate of appropriateness. Is what's being proposed appropriate? Now, having a local historic property designation does not prohibit what you can or cannot do at a particular site. It just encourages that the design of what's being proposed is appropriate. So for instance, you know, would you want a neon building flashing, you know, electric lights 24 hours a day? Even though it may look like the coolest thing, it may not be appropriate for what is actually at that park. So it has nothing to do with use, everything to do with aesthetics, just, you know, to kind of boil it down to, you know, the nuts and bolts. Certainly there have been, you know, wonderful additions through the Greenwich Arts Council in regards to sculpture that's on the site. And, you know, I think that has always been such a well-planned process. And certainly something like that could certainly be continued because, you know, they really have demonstrated a great sensitivity for the sculpture and its placement within the park. And I think there was another question that you had and I've completely forgotten what it was. So please remind me what that other question was.
Sure. It's, it's actually a process. And it's, it's whether we're going to have a second read on this.
Yes. So according to the state, this is the only formal time that we come to the Board of Selectmen for their official designation for a committee. Now, as the Board of Selectmen, you can certainly attach an addendum to that. Meaning, you know, you would like to receive a copy of this report, you know, once it's completed, to either weigh in, to not weigh in. You may certainly attend any of the public meetings to weigh in on the report at that event as well. I don't begin to want to tell you how to do your own business, but do know that officially, this is it. But if you want to add something, you would have to vote on it as an addendum or a stipulation. I'm not quite sure exactly how you do that with the Board of Selectmen.
I actually wasn't going that far. I was just curious about, in terms of designating the Historic District Commission as the study committee, whether we vote, whether the board votes on that today or do we wait for some public input and then vote at the next meeting?
Well, just to let you know, as I had mentioned, there are seven sites that have the different type of either local historic property or local historic district designation. And for all those, the Historic District Commission was the designated committee. Simply because they have the appropriate credentials to do so. You know, part of being on the HGC is not only do you get vetted by, you know, the townsfolk, but resumes are sent up to the state of Connecticut just to ensure that, you know, its members really do know, if you pardon the expression, what they're talking about. And we have been very fortunate since the HGC came into being, which I think was in 73 or 76, you know, to have an amazing group of individuals that have a variety of skillsets and a passion for historic preservation that have just really helped the town retain a lot of its historic character.
Thanks, Anne. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm more than happy to do, to vote on this now. The people in that area that are affected by, are very supportive of it. As you heard, the money, it's not going to be an issue because they've stepped up here to offer to help to pay for it. And it's a study. And this, I think, is the appropriate organization to do that. So I'm okay to vote with now, but certainly I'll see with Lauren and Janet.
I'm okay to vote. You know, I think I agree. It's, it's a study, not the designation. So I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. Again, thank you so much. Tell Steve I said hello and thank him too. Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion to accept the Historic District Commission as the designated group to study this Bruce Park Historic District Study?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. That's exciting. We'll see what comes about with that. And Bruce Park is one of our most beautiful parks and it's got a great, great, great history. So certainly anything we could do to protect that. I think this is a step in the right direction. So we'll, we'll stand by and watch the process go now. But thank you so much, Anne. Appreciate it again. With that, thank you. With that, I don't see anything else on the agenda unless anybody else wants to say anything. If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Barb. Thanks, Jenny. And we'll see you in a little bit.